Hey family, I'm gonna wait on some of y'all to get up in the room. Get up in the room. Put the banner up. Okay. Last thing I'll do today. Well, no, I still have signs, uh, zodiacs to do. But, family, I've been going since this morning after I did morning, uh, daddy message. Okay, I had two interviews today. I did, hey, family, hey, T-Rose, hey, 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 welcome, welcome. It's time for shadow work sessions. We got some stuff, we got some things we're gonna talk about today, right? Um, today is about knowing thyself. Um, and how we're gonna tap back into that. Although we have talked about, um, self-awareness and knowing thyself, we're gonna talk a little bit more about how to kind of recognize and to differentiate our subconscious and our conscious mind. Um, if you've been with me with shadow work sessions for a while, you know, I've touched on this a few times. I always like to tap back into this because it helps with us being able to be self-aware, right? So we're gonna talk about that today. Um, I did send the notification out, but I like to give everybody a little bit of time, right? Because some people just getting off of work, some people are, you know, scroungling in, which some may just not make it, right? But they get to watch it after I make the video, um, of us being here in our sacred space. Um, but today is all about it, family. We're gonna talk about knowing thyself, right? Um, the first thing I want to talk about in knowing thyself, right, is, um, how aware are you guys now, even with us doing our shadow work sessions for so long? Um, are you aware of yourself or how you feel? Um, how you may feel when things change? Or you can actually feel when something is different? Or, you know, do you recognize that? Do you know, like, when you're getting sick? You know, just physically, your physical body also has a lot to do with your emotions. Um, people don't realize that, that how they feel affects their actual physical being. Um, and you pick up on those things when you feel out of place or you feel that your emotions aren't right, but that's self-awareness. Um, so hopefully you realize that. And if you don't realize that you're, I have a few ways for you to recognize it or to tap into it to kind of start working with thyself. Because sometimes we lose the way, right? We, we lose the way and we are so bogged down by everyday situations and work and family and friends and, you know, whatever it is, children, husbands, wives, right? Um, that we don't take the time to work with thyself. I think Capricorn's energy was that for October is self-care, right? Because, you know, Capricorns are hard workers as well, right? So they don't take the time, they're doing all these different things for everybody else instead of doing for self. And that's not being able to recognize when you're, you know, out of alignment, right? So self-awareness will bring you back to that. Yes, I can tell when something is going on at, on the offset. Yes, that's you knowing yourself. That's you being able to know thyself. At least you are able to recognize that. Some people don't even recognize that, you know? Some of us don't even realize that some people don't recognize when their emotions are off or when they're not feeling their own emotions or when they're picking up on other people's emotions. Um, sometimes it may not even be somebody else's emotions. It may be your own emotions, but it may be long lingering traumatic situations from your past that you haven't even realized is trickling into your livelihood now as well as what you may have even experienced when you were, you know, younger or even a teenager or adolescent or however it may go for you, right? In your life. Some people don't know how to recognize it. Some people don't recognize that something has changed with their partner. You know what I'm saying? People who have been in relationships with others for so long, sometimes they don't even recognize how someone else's energy is changing because they can't recognize themselves. So how can you recognize anything outside of you? So this is to have self-awareness in reference of that as well as knowing thyself. Now, it goes a total different way for me because I look at it spiritually. Um, but I was looking at this one article, right? When I was doing my research and stuff like that. Um, and it was talking about Socrates, right? Which is the Greek god. And that Greek god, um, they said, "Create it, know thyself," right? But that to me was like, what? No, knowing thyself has been around way before any of that, right? Knowing thyself is basically, um, symbolism, right? Of just going within and tapping in with your true self, you know, good and bad, right? Being able to embrace, remember I always tell you guys to embrace your shadow. It's being able to embrace your shadow. It's being able to embrace the good about yourself, what you love about yourself, but also embracing the bad, right? Also being able to recognize when something is going wrong, self-awareness. Self-awareness sometimes is not only about you recognizing it for yourself, but being able to get feedback from others about what has changed. Because that's how you'll be able to sometimes recognize something different too, that you may not be, that you may be blinded to, you know? Sometimes we have what they consider rose colored glasses that we wear about ourselves, but we can see everything outside of us going wrong. When in actuality, it's a reflection of you, you see? That's why we tell you sometimes to do mirror shadow work, right? Where you looking at yourself, you know, you pinpointing, you have to look at yourself. You have to realize that, listen, okay, this is not outside of me, this is me. Especially if it's something that keeps occurring over and over and over and over again because that's insanity to think that it's something outside of you when it continuously, you're the common denominator. A lot of people have that situation where they blame, 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 they point the finger, but that's not knowing thyself because you're a reflection of everything that you allow within your energy, within your environment, within your space. So it's like you have to know your place. That's why it's good to know who you truly are, to know that you're not gonna be able to get along with certain people. You should know what type of jobs that you should be in. You should know because you know yourself, right? You should know your environments, that's gonna increase your, your vibrations or what's gonna bring your vibrations down. That's knowing thyself, right? Hey, Melissa, hey, hey, hey. Okay, what'd you say, T-Rose? It took me a while to distinguish when I feel other emotions. Yes, me too. Mm-hmm. Instead of my own, being an empath can have you like that sometimes. It, it does. Being an empath can have you all over the place, trust me. I was like that just this week, right? Where I picked up on something. But I picked up not only on somebody else's emotions, where they were like overwhelmed with emotions, right? But I picked up on, you know, energy that someone was sending me that wasn't great. You see? But I knew it wasn't me. Because I know I don't, I don't even think that way. I don't feel that way most of the time, right? And see, also, we have to recognize that as me being a reader, I have to recognize that and cleanse as well. That spiritual hygiene. So being able to cleanse and get that energy off of me or away from me, right? And being able to, um, return to sender if it is something negative that somebody is sending me, right? So these are the things, but you have to be able to recognize those things. And it does take time, like you said, T-Rose. At first, I wasn't able to pick up on that. I didn't even realize it was an empath. I just didn't realize that I always felt a certain way at some times or felt a certain way when I'm dealing with certain people or talking to certain people or being in certain places or around certain people, right? Or even in certain environments. Not realizing the whole time that I was an empath. Some people don't realize that, that they're actually empath, you know? Then they wonder why they, this, that goes back to that analogy I gave you guys that time in reference of knowing thyself in reference of going in large crowds. And I know me and Tash just talk about that all the time. I don't like to be in a lot of large crowds. At first, I used to do it all the time, concerts and stuff like that. And wonder why I feel completely drained. Saw that energy, negative and good, you know? But it's me knowing thyself, knowing I can't be in those type of environments anymore because my spirit does not allow me, it just won't allow me, right? So I decide, you know, to, to conserve and protect my energy. You see? To, to conserve and protect my energy. And so it is, so I, this is another way for us to be, um, for us to be, um, aware, family, of, you know, what we, what we need to do. So I wanted to talk to you guys about that. I wanted to give you multiple different things in reference of you reflecting. But first, I want to talk about, I want to read to you out of this article that I read about, um, what does it mean to know thyself? And truly, the truth of that face can mean whatever it means to you, right? So it's not one, it's not one dimension, it's multi-dimensions to that. It, it is basically where it's, um, know your limits, know your motivation, know simply you, know what's your triggers, know what's gonna make you feel happy, know what, what it is in reference of what's gonna make you feel sad. But also know that these emotions or this situation that I'm feeling in the thoughts, because remember, everything is all mental. So know when something isn't your full thoughts. Because thoughts are emotions or triggers the emotions within, you see? Right, protect your energy and your peace. People can consume both, yes. Asha, Asha, Melissa. Mm-hmm, yeah. So when we say that, what does that mean? It's, but you have to know that, right? Some people don't even know how to protect their energy because they're so used to giving it all away, you know? They used to giving it all away. Some people can't be by themselves. Some people cannot be by themselves. They feel like something is wrong with them if they're by themselves for a certain amount of time or isolation or solitude, right? When in actuality, that's what they need because they've been choosing the wrong people to share their energy with. And energy is a currency of you, worth more than money. That's what people fail to realize, you see? So in the article that I was reading, it says, "The original saying may have been to know not to speak ill of those who decide your fate." Right? So that's like in the literature. "But by knowing thyself is a word of caution and a word of motivation." Okay? So I loved how he said that in the article, right? He said, "It is, it is of caution and it is of motivation." See the duality in it? Hey, family? So it's the duality in reference of you knowing thyself, just like it's a duality within you, the good and the bad. And we always talk about that, right? The duality within us. We know that it's gonna be, you know, negative parts of us, it's gonna be good parts of us, you know? That we decide to allow, you know, to come out, right? Some can't go without being, yes. And not even just that, Ms. Melissa, some can't even just be in their own company of their own selves. And they wonder why they have hard times of staying calm because you've always had distractions in your external vibrations where you can't even tap into your internal vibrations, you see? And you can't recognize it, so you don't even recognize yourself. And that's the important part about knowing thyself. You have to know when you are, are able to, um, recognize the things that you, 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 that trigger you, that, that, that may bring you back to maybe even childhood memories and, um, make you feel some kind of way, right? Even internally, right? But we gotta be able to recognize that. If you don't recognize it, you're gonna just keep going on creating chaos for yourself and for others and questioning what's going on in your life. Um, yes, have to distinguish, distinguish the differences, the key. Yes, it is distinguishing the difference is the key. And I was thinking of this because of things that had happened to me even this week, right? Of being able to distinguish that, you know, I was feeling some kind of way. But not only that, even within the past few weeks, I felt this energy of some concern. Those who are connected to me very strongly, they pick up on it. So just like my best friend, she picked up on it, you know what I'm saying? She dreams, she has good visions and dreams and very strong spiritual gifts. And she basically told me, you know what I'm saying? With what confirmation of what I already felt. And not only just the spiritual family being able to tap in because we are connected as well. But it's those things is what I mean, family, being able to tap in. Now, back to the, um, what the article was saying that I wanted to give you guys some aspects of before I show you the screenshots that I have, um, that we're gonna break down. But knowing thyself, word of caution in the word of motivation. Though that's what it states in all. This may be true and quite literal, okay? The fog and what we don't know about ourselves is never taken into caution for what we apply ourselves in and how we should go about doing it in a way that benefits us the most. So knowing thyself is how much applied introspection, which is inner, to our personalities has take, has been taken. And if we can witness our strengths and our weaknesses. See, that's the duality of knowing thyself, your strengths and your weaknesses. Applying your weaknesses, um, you know, to the things that you have strengthened and vice versa. Your strengths to take over those weaknesses, you see what I'm saying? Because as he said, the world is constantly changing, family. We gotta be able to recognize these things. And these things are gonna help us when it is emergency situations that are gonna come and happen, family. So now is the time for you to consider and think about all these things and what is your limits, what is your triggers, right? What it, what, you know, like the article says here, he said, "There is no penalty in doing what you have no experience in." See, sometimes we're gonna have to step out of the comfort zone and do some things that you may not be comfortable with. But it may change the aspect of your life, you know? Especially if you know thyself, where you know what's gonna trigger you or, okay, maybe I shouldn't do that, but okay, maybe I should take a risk in that because I know my strength. I know I can change the fear into having faith. So this is about giving meaning and effort of doing what it is to know thyself well enough to see the advantage and gaining that experience. See, our courage is constantly tested, our motivation ever struggling, see? So when he said that in the article, I felt that strong, right? Our courage is constantly tested, which it is, right? Because you're constantly tested in reference of, are you gonna be strong enough? Are you gonna have courage enough? Do you have the faith? Are you gonna be able to heal through this situation? All of these things, right? We have all of these philosophers that brought us all these different ways of looking at things and how to handle it and stuff like that. And sometimes we don't even take into accountability one of the aspects of the way that we've been taught by all these different ones and how all of them have different, um, beliefs, right? But taking all of those beliefs and applying it to how it resonates with you is, is what you should be doing. See, because everything may not resonate with you and that's fine, right? But that's why he was saying, there's no penalty in reference of experiencing things that may work for you, that may not work for someone else, you know? But you would never know if you don't try it or if you don't experience it. Because remember, experience is the best teacher. Life experiences is the best teacher, see? But how can you experience something if you don't go through it? And then you won't even know if that is a trigger or if that is something that you can really truly deal with, you see? But anyways, I wanna get to this, um, I wanna show you guys some of this also that I have, um, put together in reference of a PowerPoint, um, so we can look over that as well. So these are some of the things that, um, and these are some of the people that teach, right? Um, shadow work that teaches how to, um, work with our psychology of the mind, right? Because everything is all mental in reference of knowing thyself. It starts with, with what first, the mental, the mind. The mind, the body, and then the soul. And soul is actually the, the main piece of you, but your mind is actually what's gonna drive that. So here's the aspect of showing you like Carl Jung, which is about the individual, like, the individual, right? And he talks about shadow work. So if you look at it, he's the one that will help us in reference of personal growth, right? The anatomy, things like that. And then if you guys went through school like me, which was college and, you know, even in high school, they taught, they taught Maslow, right? Maslow was definitely, you know, the psychology, right? Um, my best, one of my best friends have a degree in psychology. She's really good at like breaking down people and how, and then on top of that, having spiritual gifts. So it's like double, right, for her. But that's all about self-actualization he talked about, Maslow. So some of these are the underlying in the, um, parentheses of some of the, um, people that talked about these things. But it gives you an outline, an outline of who you can tap into in reference of what aspect of life you may be having a time with at one point in your life, right? Like self-acceptance. You may be going through some things in reference of guilt or doubt or blame or shame. It's fully functioning person is under Rogers, where it's about acceptance. Accepting of yourself. You may wanna look at some of his work, see? Um, maturity, Al Gore, it was about acceptance and purpose of life. So, you know, he has some things out there too. Executive processes of the personality. Um, New Garden, um, the purpose in life. He went over there in reference of psychology as well. A lot of these I got in psychology class, right? But psychology also helps with knowing thyself and knowing the mind and knowing how to deal with other people. That's why you see these two down here about mental health and will to meaning. Frank, uh, Frankel and Joe Haddam. Um, they taught about positive relationships. Basically, relationships and personal growth through relationships. So these are the ones, like, if you have some type of situation around how to handle relationships, how to toggle, um, personal development for Eccerson, right? Personal development goes in reference of his, um, theses and his, um, philosophy and so forth. These are the people that wrote different things about it that may help you on a literature standpoint, right? To help you be able to tap in about knowing thyself and how to handle certain situations, even the basic life tendencies, right? What are we, what are we, um, what do we have the tendencies of doing? What is our temptations and how it all flows together? You see, it comes together as a wheel. And it's so funny that they always put a wheel in reference of, um, the symbology, but that's truly what we are, is the wheel, right? All in all, we make, we make that up and there's the soul in the middle, right? All coming together with these different things. So I wanted you to guys to actually look at that and realize the different aspects of, you know, that knowing thyself can be broken out in so many different ways, right? And sometimes we have to deep dive in maybe one of these at one time. Like, you know, maybe even being able to have positive relationships. Maybe you've never had positive relationships with people. Well, you may wanna look at things around the mental health and willing, will to meaning, right? With Frankel. We'll get some of his literature and some of the books or, you know, things online. Just Google it and these things will come up and help you, family, all right? Um, next, I wanna talk about, um, the six ways to improve self-awareness. Now, this goes back to what I was talking about, um, with the self-awareness about being able to, you know, recognize your strengths and your weaknesses and some of these things I kind of already reflected on. But I'm gonna start back from the beginning. Definitely about asking for feedback, you know? Being able to recognize and modify incorrect views that have established about yourself. So maybe sometimes, family, this is a good one to really check in with thyself. And this is also about getting to know yourself. Sometimes you can't recognize your flaws that are shown externally. Sometimes you're gonna have to take, it's like taking, um, what do they call it? Like, um, criticism, right? Um, constructive criticism. It's about taking constructive criticism, asking for feedback, being able to do that. That's having a strength in that. Some people can't do that because they look at people being like what they consider nowadays haters, right? But maybe your haters, like they always say, be your motivators in reference of what it is that they see. And really check, yes, check in with thyself and say, okay, maybe I do have a problem with that. You know what I'm saying? It's being able to identify and, and modify the things that may not be, you know, something that's gonna help you or serve your highest good. Because it's all about improving thyself on top of knowing thyself, okay? So, um, so that is the thing. So just ask for feedback for sometimes from people. I know I do with my son because I know he gonna, sometimes he gonna be too real about it, okay? But sometimes you need to know. He'd be like, "Ma, you, ma." Like, you know, and he'll just give me the real, you know? But that's asking for that feedback, you know? Sometimes maybe not just your children or not just family, but people outside of them because they can sometimes be biased too. So maybe somebody that you may get critical, um, constructive criticism back from, maybe like a teacher, if you're taking a class, you know? Or maybe a coworker, right? Or you may can give the same back, give them feedback to let them know what you've identified, especially what you know in thyself and you being able to go through these steps of improvement. Teach each one, teach one, right? So once you master it, allow somebody else to be able to master it as well. That's how we're gonna all be better people, you see? This is not about any judgment or anything like that. This is a no judgment zone, but we're all about improving ourselves, right? So recognizing our strengths and our weaknesses, this allows us to sustain strength in our weaknesses, okay? To work on them as well. The things that we are weak in, you know, it's gonna change, right? Throughout the things that you go through in life. You know, you may get stronger at something, but you may create another weakness or you may pick up another weakness or you may be weak in, you know, maybe, what? I, I mean, I don't know, it's many things in reference of weaknesses, you know? You may be, you know, your faith may be shaken. There may be a weakness for you right now, you know? Why? Because you feel like things aren't working for you. You may feel like a failure right now. But what's your strength? Your strength is being able to motivate yourself and others. So use that to motivate, you know, yourself with having faith, with changing your mindset. You know, these are the things, family, you know? Maybe you don't, um, maybe you're unable to motivate yourself, that is a weakness. Then it's time for you to look for resources that's gonna motivate you, that's gonna inspire you, see? So these are the things of recognizing them though. But if you don't recognize them, your weaknesses are gonna continue to bring you down. And your strengths may be the thing that bring you down in the first place, you know what I'm saying? Maybe some, you may have the strength in doing something that's bad, you know what I'm saying? So you gotta recognize the good and the bad that's gonna help you in certain ways, family, all right? Self-reflect, this is all self-reflection, being able to be self-aware, right? To unlock the thoughts and the emotions that might otherwise be regarded or disregarded, right? So this is reflection. This is you taking accountability that only you can fix the things that are reflected on the outside of you, right? And not having blind eye to the things that you can update and you can correct about yourself. Stop pointing the finger, things are to be looked at within, okay? So reflection and monitor your self-talk. This is like the main one. I know I have to do that with myself all the time. I was just in the car the other day saying, "No, you know what? No, don't think like that, Keesha, things is gonna change." You know? Make sure that your self-talk is positive and that you, um, celebrate your wins and you don't dwell on your failures. Small wins at that. Maybe you be like me, I got on the treadmill twice this week, okay? So I'm giving myself a pat on the back, like, okay, I did that for two days out of this week. That's good, you know, where I wasn't, I wasn't doing nothing, okay? I was eating cookies, all right? So you gotta motivate yourself and monitor your self-talk to yourself as well, okay? Practice saying no, this is one of the big things. Set yourself a goal, family, okay? For the number of temptations like me, say no to them cookies. Say no to not, um, you're gonna get, you're gonna get stuff done this week. Say no to those people who always worry you about doing something specifically every week when they won't do it for themselves. Practice saying no is a full sentence, okay? Um, saying no might not give you immediate gratification, but instead, long-term goals. Because see, when you are able to say no to that person who constantly is putting burdens on you or changing up the aspect of being able to say no where you've been saying yes, 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 and giving too much in yourself, that instance is like you freeing up the time to be able to give into you. That instance is like you freeing up the time to be able to give into you to pour it to yourself. So look at some, some things in reference of saying no. Gotta do it, even to your children, okay? Because I know I'm like that too. I won't never tell a no, but sometimes I gotta be like, look, no, okay? I gotta do this for me, you know? Because you come first, okay? Other than God, alright? Okay, and question your decisions. Ensure that any decision you make, good ones, by coming up with three reasons to why you should pursue them. This will allow you to understand motives and also to understand, I had it up here so I can read to you exactly what it says. To be able to um realize, you know, your motives pretty much, right? And to be able to recognize the things that you, um, that you want to do, right? To be able to question before acting on a decision, question it, right? We should come up with three reasons as to why we should pursue it. Stop to asking yourself why. Improves our self-awareness as it allows us to better understand the motives behind our decisions and explore them further, meaning that we can be confident that our decisions are to make good ones. So basically, it's about development of self-awareness, which is not gonna happen overnight, family. But this is about enhancing your understanding of your weaknesses, your strengths, okay? It's about you being able to be able to make informed decisions and to question the decisions that you made, even in reference of whatever it is that you're working on now, right? But also thinking back to the things where you may have not made the best decision, right? And why, okay? So this is all about your enhancement. Hey Ebony, so this is all about enhancing thyself, okay? Um, these are some interesting facts that I wanted to bring about for us to realize. And this is about knowing thyself as well, right? Our subconscious mind. A lot of people don't never really talk about your subconscious mind. But that plays a huge part in knowing thyself, your subconscious and your conscious. We're gonna talk about the conscious versus both. But the interesting fact is that your subconscious mind, it records everything. It always is alert and awake. It controls ninety-five percent of our lives. Your subconscious mind, this is what's hidden. You know, the, 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 the mind that a lot say, you know, is um, like here, it says it's built on habitation. So, you know, what you do habitually is what the, the subconscious mind builds off of. So that's why ancestors always, I mean, that's why we always give the message in reference of programming, just like the predictive programming. That's a habitual built into your subconscious mind to try to do the same thing over and over and over, see? That's the same thing with the media and how they put it in our mind and where we were brought up, you know? That's why they say you have to unlearn some shit, you know what I'm saying? It speaks to you in dreams, your subconsciousness, okay? It has no verbal um language. It takes everything literally. If you know this, then you're like, okay, that's my subconscious. You see what I'm saying? But if you don't know this, family, you would never think about these things, right? It can do trillion things at once, your subconscious mind, right? It's not logical. It's feeling, it's the feeling of your mind. See, we don't realize that the feelings of our minds is also our thoughts, family. It creates the feelings, the emotions. That's why with some of us, you know, we'd be like, oh my God, I'm going through so much. I got a headache. Yeah, because your mind is, it starts in your mind to create what's done in this physical avatar that we're in, the physical body, okay? It's a million times powerful and it is. It is. Then the conscious mind, yes, okay? So this is the breakdown of the conscious mind and the subconscious mind. All of us have this. This is the duality within the mental, the mind. The first universal law. Okay? This is the first step of knowing thyself. So the conscious mind is only ten percent, family. And then you would think it'd be vice versa, but it's not. So con- your conscious mind analyzes and reasons, thinks and plans, short-term memory, where your conscious mind is ninety percent. So it's your long-term memory, it's your emotions and your feelings like we just talked about. It's your habit patterns, your relationship patterns. This is, see how this plays a part in reference of your, your true shadow self? The addictions. Your voluntary bodily functions, yeah, I'm sorry, your involuntary bodily function. So like how your legs and everything, you know, how you move around and everything like that. Yeah, all of that is by your subconscious mind. Develop your creativity, your developmental stages, your spiritual connection and your intuition. Now look at all those things that are in your subconscious mind. And this is the portion of our mind that we don't even work with or even know. It's like we are more spiritual than physical. That's interesting. Yes. That's another things. You got it, Belis- Melissa. Absolutely. And you see why the first universal law is this all mental, because it is, you see? Because look at where the spiritual connection is. It's in the subconscious mind. It's not in the conscious mind. It's in the subconscious. And it's ninety percent in there, okay? And it's attached to what? Our emotions and our feelings. It's also connected to our habits and our relationships. That's why rituals and things like that are very important in reference of your spiritual connection, because all of this is about the subconscious mind. When you go subconsciously into that deep meditative state, ancestors is able to tap in with us because it's about our mind, it's about our spiritual connection. It's about that subconscious, family. See? And that's why also it will heighten your intuition. The more and your creativity. That's why when you tap in subconsciously, family, your creativity expands. You see? And your long-term memory is there. They say the long-term memory is what we tap into when we go into the REM sleep, right? Which is here. See? Which is all spiritual. That's why the ancestors tell us to look at our shadow self, because the subconscious mind is your shadow, which is a part of that spiritual connection, but it's also a part of who you truly are deep within ninety percent of it. Because then the ten percent of where we're trying to reason and think about things and playing things out and really in actuality, we haven't even got this set subconscious right. But if we don't know thyself, how would we know? Yeah. Okay? So in Shadow Work Sessions today, it's about us knowing at least this. If you don't come away with nothing, the ancestors want you to come away with this, family. To continue to have this picture in your mind. Because a lot of us are functioning off of our conscious mind. You know, our reasoning and our trying to analyze thing and think things through. When in actuality, we are thinking about things that we haven't even emotionally got ourself together with, you know? We haven't really been able to tap into that subconscious. And you said, um, my dream life is more interesting than physical for sure, yeah. That's because that's ninety percent of your, really, your long-term. It's things that's happened back, way back. And then there's things that are long-term too. So going back and going forth, right? But long-term. See, short-term is things that are happening within the now, you know? That's why it's probably not as interesting for us anyway. That's why some people uh dream about some things that maybe have not even come yet, right? The long-term, right? But then also some that has happened prior, like pa- prior um things, right? But all of that is, is, is uh also the developmental stages. Some of us, you know, we dream about the developmental stages, you know, when you were brought, brought up, you know, growing up as an adolescent, as a teen, as some of us as babies. You know, if you can remember that far back, that's your long-term. That's subconsciously deep down in your mind, see? Because of this habits and the patterns and your relationship patterns and with the people that were in your life and how you constantly seen those people and you dealt with those people and you guys did the same things maybe. You know, they talked the same way or you interacted with them the same way. It's that type of energy, family, and it's all embedded in your sh- in your subconscious. See, your consciousness is where you make those decisions that may not be all that great or may not, you may, you may be doing it off of your short-term. When in actuality, you should be tapping into your creativity and your intuition that would tell you how to, how to go about making those decisions. Tapping into the subconscious. That's that meditative si- state that we should be going in sometimes just to make some decisions or even making that spiritual connection. So we are, like Melissa said, we are more spiritual than, you know, physical beings. That's why we're spiritual beings, ninety percent showing here. I thought this was amazing to show it as a reflection of our subconscious against our conscious mind. That's why the conscious mind can do millions and trillions of things at a time. That's how strong and how powerful we are as people. And we don't even realize it. Because you were never given this depiction of your subconscious mind. All of us have a subconscious mind and a conscious mind. It's like they say, the left and the right hip, um, brain, right? All of that is where this all happens, the mental, right? And the things that we conflict with and challenges and our communication, how we change things, how we, how we deal with things, right? But in actuality, it's all within, right? Going within our minds and going within our hearts and going within our soul, family. It's all attached to that subconscious mind. So I bring this to you today. So you can be aware, right? So you could tap into these things and also have self-awareness, okay? This brings us back to the things that we have so many things that we work, we have to work with ourself within. But all of these things right here was to give you a boost in reference of what we need to know about how to deal with our subconscious and our conscious mind to know thyself. Because we are caution, we are motivation. You see how it goes against each other? We are the good and we are the bad, right? But that's okay. Well, you know, we have duality within, right? The conscious mind can sometimes sway the subconscious mind and vice versa, right? So yeah. Divine feminine, divine masculine, you know, all of that goes within our mind, family, and how we interact with those aspects of the soul. Remember, I talked about that in Shadow Work Class, the aspect of the soul, right? So they all go with this. So I just wanted to bring this to you guys in reference of knowing thyself. I will say the other portion of knowing thyself is for you to understand that knowing thyself is to be able to triumph and go through and come on the other side of your shortcomings and any experiences. To know thyself is to learn to understand the motivation, your work ethics, your morals, how you act. All of these things are a part of knowing thyself, family. It's something that, you know, you can achieve, you know? And some of us, it takes a while for us to really get to know ourselves, okay? Um, to get to know yourself is, is sometimes a project within. Sometimes it's gonna take for you to be able to, um, have to be thyself to get to know thyself, because you have that outside distractions that are, are clouding your judgment of yourself, you know? And clouding your, your um way of being able to tap into your subconscious mind and be able to be creative and be able to make that spiritual connection, right? Be able to work on those addictions and your relationships and things like that, that may be affecting your day-to-day and even your life now, you know? So this is all about improving yourself, okay? Knowing thyself. It's not just, oh, I know I like this. Oh, I know I like that. Yeah, but what about what's inside? Right? And what about, what is, what is it that you're showing outside that you can improve? And what, what, what is going on in reference of how you may be feeling that may not even be of you? Do you know that? Do you feel that? Or is it you? These are things you gotta ask yourself. Okay? So this is just self-awareness for us to get back, tap in about knowing thyself. Start from scratch for some of you. Some of you, you just started my Shadow Work Sessions, so this is for you. These are the things that you can start with first, because it all starts here. Especially in reference of the all is mental to help the soul, okay? And knowing you are a spiritual being, as I showed you, a reference of your subconscious and your conscious mind, right? So tap in, family. Do your work on yourself. You have to hold yourself accountable. That's what Shadow Work Sessions is about. It's not about us doing things. Sometimes we do do things together, but it's about you holding yourself accountable as well. Because ain't nobody changing your shadow but you, okay? Because there's only one you, alright? So that's, that's the thing, family. Let's pull up the outcome message from the Shadow Work um deck, my Shadow Work Deck, and we'll wrap it up, okay? This is going to be, um, uh, a message for you to take with you today to do as your shadow, you know, in your shadow work. Like me, I do my shadow work every Sunday, right? Where I'm writing in my journal, doing my journal prompts and so forth. Um, but yeah. Image, what's the image? Or imagine? Um, but let's see what the ancestors want us to know as a collective to take away today in reference of doing your shadow work, okay? Of course, this is from my Shadow Work Deck. Crown the universe within, okay? Um, we're sold out right now of my Shadow Work Deck, family, but y'all know what it is, okay? Alright, so let's pull a message, ancestors, for the collective here on Patreon. Give us a journal prompt to take away in reference of knowing thyself, ancestors, for the collective. Thank you. Gave it to me fast, too. Alright, this is knowing thyself. Are you mindful of your negative thoughts because they become reality? Are you mindful of your negative thoughts because they become reality? This is embracing the shadow. So ancestors not giving us a journal prompt, but they're giving us a question to thyself about embracing your shadow. Are you mindful? So once again, we're back to awareness. So the ancestors want some of us to be mindful of our negative thoughts because they become reality. Okay? That's what the ancestors want us to go away with today about knowing thyself. Some of you need to know that your negative thoughts are creating some negativity in your life because your emotions are taking over. Can you put the image of the, yes, I surely will. You want the one of, um, this one? You want that one? Okay, I'll put it up. When, when we come out of it, I'll put it up on Patreon for you. I will. Um, I love that. Um, I say this as well, Melissa, because it's really, it really highlights exactly the subconscious mind, you know what I mean? Yeah, I will. No problem, sis. I got you. Um, so yes, family, so that is Shadow Work Sessions for today. I hope this gave you some insight, some, you know, information in reference of your, um, I put oil on my face today, family, and it made my face sweat so bad. But, um, but yes, and, and, and be mindful of your negative thoughts, okay? In your shadow work for this week, alright? That is your shadow work for this week, to be mindful of your negative thoughts because your thoughts are becoming your reality, okay? And be careful of what you're speaking to, because that's becoming your reality. Thank you, sis. I had a few interviews today. So I had to get dressed up. You know how it go, right? So yeah. Um, so yes, family, okay? I love you guys, alright? Through the darkness to the light, I'm getting ready to get me some, some food, okay? Because I'm a little hungry, so I'm gonna make me a salad. Um, I haven't ate too much today at all, alright? So, um, I wanted to prepare this for you guys early today and, um, and I'm doing Zodiacs. So go to the channel, air and earth is up, fire and water is next, okay? So I should have all of them up, if not by tonight, by in the morning, okay? So I love you guys. I appreciate you guys for being here for Shadow Work Sessions. Love you too, Melissa. Thank you for your interaction and thank you for being here. Thank you for supporting me. I love you. I love you, love you, love you, um, down. Thank you all, for all my, um, other people that are in here that may not be so active in the chat. I love you guys too, you guys know I love y'all. Make sure you check this out, make sure you write down some of these things that are here, make sure you do your shadow work, okay? And, um, I shared air with my daughter, she's, oh, okay! Much love, thank you, Melissa, thank you, thank you, thank you. Make sure she subscribes to the channel too, okay? And tell her I'll be having a lot more Zodiac stuff up and I'm doing an ancestors message as well soon, okay? So I'm getting back on my stuff and I'm going back to True Crime, but I had to take a break from it, family. You know, sometimes it gets a little, you know, poof, you know? Bob down with the, with the, um, the True Crime sometimes, okay? So, oh, it definitely resonates, okay, good, I'm glad, I'm glad. Well, fire is coming, okay? So your sign is coming as well, make sure you check your, your sun, your moon and your rising, because sometimes your moon and your rising will resonate just as good as your sun. So don't forget about those, okay? Alright, family, I'm getting up out of here, much love to you guys. And for those who are watching the replay, don't forget to hit the like button on the video as well, family. I love you guys, through the darkness to the light, until the next time, family, peace, peace, peace. Okay, Melissa, thank you again, much love, family, peace.